Good evening. This is a call, the meeting of the Gloucester City Council for Tuesday, November 27th, 2018, to order. And our first order of business is the flag salute and a moment of silence. So, I haven't led the flag salute in a long time, so I'm going to do it tonight. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to take this opportunity to dedicate our moment of silence to Brian Tarr, who passed away a week or so ago. Brian was a long, he was an incredible citizen of Gloucester. I've, I knew Brian since we were in Sunday School together, and many of us go back a long way with Brian. And his, his contributions to the city are well-known, and they will be honored during his service. But I just wanted to have the city council mark this occasion because Brian, among all of his accomplishments, was a friend to all of us, but he was a friend to Gloucester. And that was, that's very special because we will mourn his passing, but we will always cherish his friendship, which will continue forever. And I know there are some other councillors who wanted to make mention. Councillor Gilman?
Thank you, councillor. So, Brian and I have known each other for well over 40 years. When we were in our twenties, thirties, and forties, we used to play tons of tennis together. He was brave enough to take me out on the golf course for the first time in my life. And then when I was on the school committee, we worked six years really closely together. He was an amazing team player. He would be offered to be the West, the Veterans Memorial principal for a year or two during transitions. He was facilities manager, he was assistant superintendent, and then there was even a month where he was acting superintendent when we had the search out for a superintendent, and we had three different superintendents within a year and a half. And he did so much. He was the glue, the cohesiveness. He was just a wonderful, wonderful person and a leader in the schools and the community. We'll miss him.
Thank you, councillor Gilman. Councillor Memhard?
Just on a different note, beyond helping Gloucester through our school system, since 1976, since 1976, Brian Tarr supported the families of the commercial fishing industry as the tireless advocate and president of the Cape Ann Commercial Fishermen's Loan Fund, which is a unique model for revolving lending institutions, which had a successful 35-year track record. Because of this loan fund, when difficult times made it hard for fishermen to access financial resources and traditional banks shut down on them, Brian was there as, with our dedicated loan fund board, to get the facts down on the wharf, to understand their problems, to find a way to pay for a new engine or a new winch, new safety equipment, or even a new boat. Brian Tarr helped hundreds, hundreds of families fishing here in Gloucester and keeping Gloucester's fishing industry alive. More than the money in our loans, though, Brian's deep compassion and his caring advice and his encouragement were often way more valuable. And his death sadly closes a chapter on our industry's struggles these past three decades. We'll miss you, Brian.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? So, a moment of silence for Brian Tarr, please. Thank you very much. Next item of business, Madam Clerk.
Next item is oral communications.
Oral communications. During oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of the same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. The president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. So, is there anyone who wishes to speak under oral communications? Please come forward. We'll take Marjorie first, and then you. Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Marjorie Grace, 14 Hawthorne Road.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for this opportunity. My purpose for being here this evening is to make a formal request of the city of Gloucester that Hawthorne Road be changed from a private road to a public one. Excuse me. Hawthorne Road is a small road that runs parallel to Gloucester Ave. from McKecon to Bradford. It has a total of 13 residences. I purchased my home in 1999 and only became aware of it being a private road last year when a request was made to the city of Gloucester by my neighbors to fix an ongoing problem we have with flooding. I live at the bottom of two inclines. Because water runs downhill and the lack of sufficient drainage, flooding is a constant problem. Currently, the road has been flooded for more than four weeks. There is a storm drain which was put in. I believe this to be fact, I'm not 100% sure, so I will put that up front. But the drain that is on the street was put in decades ago by the husband of one of my neighbors who was a DPW employee that they just put the drain in. The trouble with the drain is it doesn't actually drain anywhere. It basically allows for an avenue for the water to seep underground. The road has been flooded periodically for years, but it is now flooded more often than not. Until recently, the flooding has been more of a nuisance than anything. However, what is happening now is that the road is beginning to sink and the pavement is crumbling directly where the gas line goes to my house. I believe that it is only a matter of time before the gas line is compromised, creating the potential for a leak. If this happens, my family and my home will be at risk, as well as my neighbors' families' and homes. What I refer to as Lake Hawthorne primarily impacts my home, number 14, and the home of Mrs. Orlando. This is her daughter, Henry, which is across the street from me. As I mentioned previously, I believe that the potential exists for the gas line to my house to be compromised, with the possibility for all scenarios associated with a gas leak. The impact to Mrs. Orlando's home is that water constantly floods her yard and her cellar during heavy rains because there is no weather for the water to drain. Several years ago, my husband dug a trench in Mrs. Orlando's yard to divert the water away from her house. More recently, a member of Mrs. Orlando's family has constructed a makeshift dam with planks and cinder blocks in an attempt to divert the water from the house. In addition to the problems resulting from rain, cars add to the situation. Whenever a car drives through the lake, the water is displaced and forced into Mrs. Orlando's yard and onto her walkway. During particularly bad rainstorms, she has to wade through the lake to get to her home. Now that winter is upon us, black ice is becoming a problem. Vehicles with only rear-wheel drive get stuck, and the constant presence of ice during cold weather as a result of Lake Hawthorne is an accident waiting to happen. It's also a danger to Mrs. Orlando's well-being, she is elderly. If she were to fall as a result of the lake freezing, she could seriously be injured. The ice and the flooding could also hamper efforts by first responders in the event of an emergency or fire. I have spoken with my councillor, Steve, hi, Steve, about the problem. We discussed arguments that were put forth by the city in the past. One request similar to the nature of mine have been submitted. I have two examples of potential arguments from the city's perspective, as well as my counter-arguments. Example number one, if we are a private road and the city of Gloucester has no obligation to maintain the road, why are we not taxed at a lower rate? The city's argument, as I understand it, people who have well-water and septic systems pay the same tax rate as those without water and sewer. My argument, people who are on well-water and septic systems do not pay water and sewer fees are therefore paying much less than those who do. Example number two of a possible argument, people who do not have children in the public school system pay the same tax rate as those who do. My argument, at some point, most everyone in this city benefited from a public school education, whether in Gloucester or in another community. The current generation of taxpayers pays for the next generation. The previous generation of taxpayers paid for the current generation of taxpayers. The next generation pays for the subsequent generation, and so on. Education is for the greater good and arguably one of the most important things as we as a community can provide our youth. Therefore, it is my opinion that this should not be used as a counter-argument regarding public versus private roads. I'm sure there's other examples that the city could put forth, and I'm more than willing to hear them, discuss them, and give my point of view. I have been told that the residents of private roads are responsible for the maintenance of those roads. Quite frankly, if I could afford to build roads, I wouldn't be living on Hawthorne Road. Nothing personal. As previously stated, there are 13 residences on Hawthorne Road, and only two are directly impacted by the drainage issue. It is completely unreasonable to expect the 11 other homeowners to pay for the road to be fixed. With the exception of the issue in front of my house, the road is in good condition. What is wrong with the road cannot be rectified by repaving it. There needs to be a system put in place to allow proper drainage. No amount of asphalt will fix the problem that exists on Hawthorne Road, and an undertaking of this sort requires engineers as well as National Grid. The price tag for this type of project is not something that I or my neighbors can afford. Lastly, 10 years ago, approximately, Hawthorne Road was chosen as the place to put the high-tension wires that deliver power to Gloucester Crossing. At no point in time was I notified that this was going to happen, and to the best of my knowledge, neither were my neighbors. Perhaps there was a public notice buried in the classified section of the Times, but I did not see one. The high-tension wires were put into place prior to the widespread use of social media as a way to share information with the citizens of Gloucester, which brings me to my final point. If my little private road can be used by the city of Gloucester to provide power to Gloucester Crossing to the benefit of the entire city of Gloucester and the surrounding communities, a very public use for a private road, it is not unreasonable to ask that the city of Gloucester maintain my tiny little road. It may not be the most picturesque street in the city, but it certainly contributes to an extremely important service to the city by way of housing the high-tension wires that keep Gloucester Crossing up and running. Thank you for your time, and I truly hope that you will take this under consideration with all seriousness, primarily because of the potential for a gas leak. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else for oral communications? Councillor McGarry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, Paul McGarry, 24 Cobblestone Lane. I wanted to thank the city and the council and the State Department of Transportation for the work that's been done on Thatcher Road near Good Harbor Beach. As you may recall, those of you who served with me on the council, I was always concerned that there was a safety issue there with people walking, especially in the summertime. It has been basically rectified. There's a lovely walkway and a bridge across the creek, and I just want to thank the council and the DPW and the administration for doing that. I also want to commend the efforts of the group called the Friends of Good Harbor, who worked tirelessly to see this happen. And councillor Memhard, in particular, I'd like to thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McGarry. We appreciate the kudos. Anyone else for oral communication? Okay. Next item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is a presentation from John P. O'Rourke, Director of Marketing, Northeast Good Energy LP, regarding municipal energy aggregation in Gloucester.
Great, thank you. And welcome, John, again. Thank you very much for coming back to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. President, councillors, for letting me appear before you tonight to give you a summary of where we are, an update with the community electricity aggregation. Again, just to go over the basic program summary, the options that were chosen by the city, the basic option, which is comparable to the National Grid basic service, apples-to-apples, is the 1098, which compares with the 137 the National Grid came out with on November 1st. The standard product for Gloucester includes an additional 5% renewable energy, that's at the 11085, and the Gloucester premium at 100% renewable energy at 13080. For those options, the basic and the premium, residents would have to call direct energy at the number on the slide. The standard product was an automatic or default for residents, and essentially, obviously, most residents chose that. I want to go over some of the nuts and bolts of the program since the postcard was mailed out in early October. Key dates for the program rollout, you had the October 6th date when postcards were received by eligible customers. And again, eligible customers were those on the basic service of National Grid who had not put themselves on a list with National Grid not to be disturbed by any third-party solicitations. So, you could essentially have some residents in Gloucester who were on basic service of National Grid who did not get the postcard or the customer notification letter because essentially they had given their name to National Grid that they did not want to be disturbed with any offers. On October 15th, the customer notification was received by the residents of Gloucester, and that also started the 30-day opt-out period. And again, that's the formal period under the law. It's required, that 30-day period. Anytime after that 30-day period, residents can opt out whenever they wish, without penalty or termination fee. November 14th was the end of the 30-day opt-out period, and essentially, that's when all the names were collected for participation in any of the three options of the program. I just want to go over basically, on a calendar basis, what we did for public outreach and how the program started. As you can see, up here in the, okay. Up in the right-hand corner, you have the postcards that arrived on October 6th. On October 9th, we did an initial presentation to the city council about the program. The 30-day opt-out period started on the 15th, and that was also the first day that we did an ad for Good Morning Gloucester that appeared on their website. On the 16th, I was at Cape Anne Museum for the meeting of the 400-year anniversary committee. I spoke to a number of people who were going to that committee meeting about the aggregation. On the 18th, I was at the Sawyer Library for the flu clinic and spoke to a number of people about the program. That was in the morning. In the afternoon, I did an info session, which was held here in this room, for a number of residents who came to ask questions. On Sunday morning, the 21st, I did a Good Morning Gloucester podcast with Joey Shea-Matori. We had quite a unique time. I understand his podcast is very, very popular. Also that morning, that was, we did a second ad on his, on his website. Then on the 23rd, I did an info session in the morning, or no, actually in the afternoon, and then the city council presentation at night to give you the update as to that time in the program. On the 25th, I was at the Senior Center, did a short presentation, and answered some questions from seniors. Then in the afternoon, I did a Q&amp;A forum here in this room for residents. On Friday morning, I was at the Senior Center on the 26th, and was there with the mayor and answered questions and did a short presentation to seniors. In November, we did another Good Morning Gloucester ad on the 6th and on the 14th. And the 14th was the last day of the official 30-day opt-out period required by the law. And again, you know, to emphasize, residents can opt out at any time without penalty or termination fee. And of course, here we are at the council tonight for the latest update. This is the ad that we posted for Good Morning Gloucester on those dates, October 15th and 21st, and also November 6th and 15th. And essentially, it has the website address and the phone number to call to get more information and ask questions. Again, this is the landing page of your website, which has a tremendous amount of information about the program that residents can go to and basically look at the frequently asked questions and get most of their questions answered there. During, there were some calls in September. We had calls in, right after the postcard went out. You can see that flurry of activity toward the center. That's when the postcards were received. Then when you see that large spike that started, that's when the letters were received. You can, you can tell that the calls increased, obviously, once those letters came in. And as people got those letters and understood more, you can see how that trend comes down. Today, or actually yesterday, there were two calls. And I would expect that next week, all of next week, we'll have maybe two or three calls all week. Altogether, there were 182 unique calls. That's not a lot of calls for a population this size. There were five or six people I spoke to twice. There was one lady I spoke to three times, and I think I made it on her Christmas card list. This is site views. This isn't as granular as the phone calls because we can't tell if they're unique views or not. But during October, there are 2,700 views. Essentially, again, once the postcard was received and once the customer notification letter was received, you see how that increased. And it went down to about 600 in November. Again, once people started to learn more about the program and they got more comfortable with the information they were provided with, that, that comes down. Again, you're going to see views that'll level out probably at, probably just below that 500 level each month because people will access the site if they have other questions or they want, want more information. Some of the common questions and concerns, all the time, the big one is, why is this an opt-out program? And essentially, it is that because that's the way the law is written. A lot of people don't understand that. We try to be very courteous and professional when we answer that question and basically say to them that, you know, it's not the city that did that, it's not Good Energy that did that, that's the way the law was written. And most of them understand that after, after a couple of minutes of talking to them. Some of them call because they have gotten the letter, thrown the letter out. They call up and they ask, how do I opt out? I want to get out. We explain that to them. We also have those people who threw the letter out and called to say, gee, I did this too fast, I want to opt in, I want to get into the program. So, we explain that to them as well. A big question is, I'm on a discount program, how will the aggregation affect me? Doesn't affect them at all, they continue with the discount program with National Grid. Same thing with people who have solar panels. They want to know how the aggregation affects them. Again, it does not. Two separate agreements, the aggregations, one, the net metering agreement with National Grid is another. There's no conflict between them, no effect. The, the customer notification letter is something that is required by the Department of Public Utilities in the detail that it's in. And unfortunately, for a lot of people, it's a confusing letter. We used to have a one-page letter, the DPU made it a two-page letter, and it looks like it might be a three-page letter soon. So, it, again, a lot of the questions were about the letter itself. We had to explain certain things to people to make it more clear. But those are the basic, the basic common questions and concerns that most people had. As of this morning, okay, these are the official numbers that we got from the opt-out period, the official opt-out period. There were 13,190 customer notifications mailed. There were 189 that we returned to the supplier for one reason or another, either people weren't there, it was the wrong address, there was a mistake on, on the address. Those received were just over 13,000, about 99%. Customer opt-outs, again, the official number as of the opt-out period were 1492, about 11%. Leaving 11,509. About two hours ago, I got an update of those numbers. The opt-outs are down 24, and the participation is up 24. The reason that happens is because there are people who sent in an opt-out card who later decide, wow, I shouldn't have done that, I want to get in, and they call, take their name off the opt-out list and get into the program. You're going to see that 14, or actually 1468 now, you're going to see that number come down significantly after the, the first bill that comes in in January. The program starts in December. As of that meter read, the bill for that period comes in in January, and you're going to, you're going to see that people who have opted out are going to be talking to friends and neighbors who are saying, wow, this isn't too bad, I'm doing okay. And those people who are apprehensive and who opted out for whatever reason to begin with, and again, some people will just opt out because they don't want to change, you'll see many of those people come back into the program. We've seen that in every single aggregation we've done here in Massachusetts, that the initial opt-out number becomes reduced as people learn that the program is something good and they come into the program. So, essentially, you know, we've had, we've had a very successful rollout. We've had a very few number of calls, 182 unique calls. You know, based on the fact that you have 13,000 residents that were mailed, customer notification letters, that's a very low number of calls. In many smaller communities, we've got many more calls than that. So, you know, between what we've done here before the council and some of the outreach we did, certainly, we got to a large number of people. You're going to see, as I say, your opt-out numbers are going to come down, and essentially, this was a very good, very good rollout. Not a lot of surprises at all, no surprises, as a matter of fact. It went along basically as expected. Any, any questions?
Councillor Gilman, and then councillor O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. This was very helpful. So, it sounds like our customer participation rate of 87%, is that higher than your other municipalities of, in neighboring communities?
The, the opt-out rate generally runs between 5% and 7%, okay? And as I say, that, and that's a stable number, okay? Your number is going to come down, that 11% is going to come down. So, you'll probably end up with that 7%, at that 7% mark.
And my second question is, going forward, how are you going to hone in on the customers that might want to get into this? Will there be, with, will there be a separate section on your website that highlights that, maybe at the beginning of it? So, when people go on your homepage that's on our city website, they can see, you know, if they want to change and opt into this, is that, how are you going to communicate that going forward?
We can put some information on the website to encourage that. One other piece of information that I did get late this afternoon, the number of people who went for the basic option was 91. The number who went for the 100% green option was 33. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot, but when you look at the fact that those 33 are basically doing 16 times more green than those who went into the default or standard option at 5 percent, that, one of those people equals 17 of your standard option people. So that's quite a bit. And essentially, you know, you have many people in that 5 percent, and that is a tremendous, tremendous impact on putting more renewable energy projects online. So it's a very good, very good participation.
Thank you, Counselor O'Hara.
Thank you. Thank you, John. We talked on the telephone, if you remember.
Yes, I do.
You said you were a selectman.
Yes, I am.
What town are you a selectman in?
Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Conway, Massachusetts.
Conway, Western Massachusetts. Right off 91, beautiful part of the, the Western Massachusetts.
Yes.
Doesn't exist in Massachusetts.
You know, I usually tell people we're five minutes west of Yankee Candle and they know exactly where we are.
That's exactly right. Sure. Terrific. Well, thank you very much for making that trek back to Gloucester. That's a jaunt. Did many a time.
And I'll be here whenever you want. That's my cell phone number on there. You have questions, any residents have questions, call me.
So basically, the program's ongoing, it never stops, so any of the Gloucester residents can opt in, opt out.
Absolutely.
Terrific. Terrific. A question that I didn't get to ask you, and your handout is high-quality paper, beautiful colors, how does your company make money? Off of Gloucester?
Essentially, we are paid by the competitive supplier. To put that in perspective, it's one tenth of a penny per kilowatt hour. So if you take a 100-watt light bulb and burn it for 10 hours, okay, we get a penny out of that. Okay? And that's how we're paid.
Terrific. I appreciate that. And again, thank you very much for your service to your citizens in Conway and making your appearance again.
Yes, I know what you go through, believe me.
Why, what do we go through? It's beautiful. It's all fun.
But there's only three of us. You guys get to spread it out a little bit more.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara, Counselor Memhard.
Thank you again, John. Two quick questions. My understanding is that the National Grid standard rates are evaluated and fluctuate quarterly?
No, they're, for residential, it's every six months.
Six months?
Yeah. The rates that, the rates that started in November will end April 30th. And as of May 1, they'll be adjusted to another rate.
And there'll be an opportunity for us and residents to evaluate your rates versus the new National Grid standard rate?
That will be on, that will be on the website, yes.
And so people should be looking for that every six months, approximately?
Yes.
The second question just relates again to commercial and businesses, business customers. These rates, in your experience, are they attractive compared to other business rates, either through National Grid or through other competitive suppliers?
In the National Grid areas, usually, that rate is very good for commercial customers, yes.
So if they wish to participate, how do they do so?
Anyone, any resident or business that's on the basic service of National Grid can participate. Any commercial establishment that has been with another supplier, and many of the larger ones have for years been with other suppliers, they can come into the program anytime.
Excellent. Thank you for those clarifications.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor, any other counsel questions? No? John, thank you so much for coming back and talking to us. We really appreciate that, and I think it's a very impressive launch.
Anytime you want an update, let me know.
We will let you know.
We're around the area.
Great. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item is the confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Thank you. We have a couple appointments this evening. The first is the Council on Aging. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appoint Anthony J. D'Antonio to the City Council, to the Council on Aging, term to expire 2/14/21, an iso move.
Moved and seconded.
There's Anthony in the back.
There's Anthony. Okay. Do you want to say anything about his qualifications?
Yes. He has worked in healthcare, particularly in post-acute care, market development, both as a provider of care through hospice. And he has told the Ordinance Administration that he has affinity for seniors and the disabled, and that the Council on Aging is an ideal appointment for him.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for agreeing to serve. Any counselor questions or comments? Then what's this, Counselor Gilman?
I am on the Council on Aging Board as a representative from the council, and I'll look forward to working with you. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next time, next one.
Thank you, Anthony. Next, we have the Historic District Commission. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appoint Barbara Lambert to the Historic District Commission as an alternate, term to expire 2/14/22, with an effective date of 2/14/19, an iso move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Do you want to just wave at us?
Yes. She is the former chair of the Gloucester Historical Commission and is the owner of one of the city's oldest homes. And she has a wealth of professional experience, and we are pleased to welcome her back into a civic lifestyle. So, thank you, Barbara.
Yes, Barbara, thanks for agreeing to come back. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate your service. Next item.
Next item is the Consent Agenda and Unanimous Consent Calendar.
Okay, we have a consent agenda and a unanimous consent calendar. Anyone wish to pull anything from either? Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. Please pull under the Consent Agenda, item number seven, memorandum from the Assistant DPW Director regarding request approval of signed location lease number 19062 between the Gloucester House Restaurant and the City of Gloucester to refer this land disposition matter to the P and D Committee rather than to B and F.
Thank you. Any others? Counselor Cox.
I just have a question on that one because there is a monetary aspect to this.
Yes.
So...
I believe the Counselor...
I'm fine with putting something on her agenda so she has a meeting.
Right. That's all. That's what she seems to do. It's still on your, it's still on your agenda, too.
But it doesn't need to be.
Yes, Counselor...
No, it doesn't. That is my error. The administration did ask me, and I just said, I thought it was monetary, so it was B and F. But looking back in history, it's gone to P and D.
Okay. Thank you. It comes around every five years, so I don't really remember.
Okay. Any others? Okay, then with that exception, we will entertain a motion to accept the...
So moved.
And moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed. Thank you. And do we need any further explanation on what you've, Counselor Gilman?
But I didn't move the motion, so that was my fault.
Okay, then why don't you move the motion?
So I'd like to move the motion that I originally stated to transfer that to, from B and F to P and D.
Aye. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. So that's all done. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item is the Budget and Finance, November 15th Special Meeting Committee Report.
Okay. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance unanimously recommend that the City Council approve Special Budgetary Transfer 2019 SBT 5 in the amount of $1,962.42 from Police Uniform Salaries Account, as noted, to Police Investigations Career Educational Incentive Account, as noted, for the purpose of funding the projected shortfall in the Career Educational Incentive Account, an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Explanation?
There was a shortfall in the Detective Educational Incentive Account due to a contract settlement after the FY19 budget was submitted and passed.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council accept, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a U.S. Department of Justice FY18 Bulletproof Vest Program passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security in the amount of $11,925, with a grant expiration date of 8/31/2020, for the purpose of purchasing 15 ballistic vests for Gloucester Police Department Officers, an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, the Police Department is in receipt of a grant obtained annually in the amount of $11,925. There is no match. All officers are issued a bulletproof vest, and all issued in different timeframes, and believe it or not, they actually have expiration dates. So we just cycle through with what we get with the grant.
So we can't get them ourselves for surplus? If needed.
So I did share some useless information at the meeting that Kevlar was actually invented by a female. So, just a little bit, a tidbit of information to take you along the way.
Very nice to know. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next, next item.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council accept, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a cash donation of $5,137 from the Gloucester Fund for the purpose of purchasing two benches and a picnic table to be located at Burnham's Field, an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment?
Yep. The city is in receipt of a donation to purchase two benches and a picnic table, which have already been installed. So I encourage anybody to go down there and use them, line up your snowballs or whatever, enjoy them. A friend of, a neighbor of Burnham's Field, his mother passed away. So with his inheritance, he wanted to do something to honor her, so we did have the benches and everything installed.
Great. Nice. Very good. Counselor Gilman?
This is probably already done, but is there a thank you note that goes on behalf of the city for something like this? Because it's quite a generous donation.
You're right. I wrote one myself because I know the donor personally. I'm happy to bring one to City Council, and I should have brought it this evening, but I forgot. I will circulate it through the Clerk's office and leave it in the inboxes, and then see at the next meeting, December 4th. Is that right? So, yeah. No, for City Council? The 11th. Okay. So, but yes.
Thank you. Great idea.
I don't think it's routine, but it certainly is appreciated, so.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next item.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve SA Supplemental Appropriation 2019 SA 11 in the amount of $32,000 from the Building Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance Account, as noted, to O'Malley School Building Improvements Account, as noted, for the purpose of replacing partitions in six O'Malley Innovation Middle School bathrooms and improvements to the school's public address system. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
The DPW has requested a supplemental appropriation in order to make improvements at the school. So the bathroom partitions are at a cost of $22,000, and the public address system is a two-way communication system, and that is estimated to be a $10,000 cost.
Okay. Any other counsel questions or comments? This is a roll call vote. This is supplemental.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Supplemental Appropriation 2019 SA 11 in the amount of $32,000 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
Due to the tight nature of the turnaround, I would ask for a reconsideration so the money can be spent.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We'll have a roll call vote.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
No.
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 Counselor LeBlanc?
No.
Counselor Lombard?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
No.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yeah, no. Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Heck?
No.
Motion to reconsider SA 2019 11 fails on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Next item, Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve Supplemental Appropriation 2019 SA 10 in the amount of $376,441.69 from the Stabilization Fund Transfer to General Fund Account, as noted, to fund balance designated for snow and ice deficit account, as noted, for the purpose of funding the FY18 snow and ice account deficit, and an iso move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Just tell us...
In order to clean up the snow and ice deficit from FY18, the administration is requesting to take funds from the city's stabilization fund in the same amount prior to the filing of the FY18 tax recap. In the past, the deficit has been made whole with free cash, but timing is the issue. The funds will come from the stabilization fund, and with the redistribution of free cash this year, it'll be replenished.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote.
Counselor Holgrum?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Supplemental Appropriation 2018 SA 10 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Counselor Cox, again?
Due to the tight turnaround again for the approval of the city's tax recap, I ask for reconsideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Counselor Holgrum?
No.
Very good.
Counselor LeBlanc?
No.
Counselor Lombard?
No.
Counselor Memhard?
Nope.
Counselor Nolan?
No.
Counselor O'Hara?
No.
Counselor Cox?
No.
Counselor Gilman?
No.
Counselor Heck?
Nope.
Motion to reconsider Supplemental Appropriation 2019 SA 10 fails on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is the Ordinance and Administration Standing Committee Report of November 19th.
Counselor LeBlanc?
So we have one item from the committee report, and then a lot of heavy lifting later on in the public hearing, so I'll get this over with quickly. Ordinance Administration voted one in favor, zero, I mean, two opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend its rules of procedure, Rule Number Two, order of business by placing councilor's requests to the mayor after the consent agenda and renumber Rule Number Two accordingly. An iso move.
Moved and seconded. Do you have a narrative of this? Or shall we ask Counsel... Counselor O'Hara, you want to explain why this is before us?
Yes, thank you. From what I understand, this was the format that was done in past councils. And my thoughts in talking with other counselors pertaining to having the administration present, just whoever's here from the administration, it's not necessarily, I've heard that for some reason I requested that all department heads be here, and that was not my intent. It was only just so that we could possibly have a few people here that, we work for you, the taxpayers and the people at home, that they may have... that we work for you, the taxpayers and the people at home, that they may have a few more people listening. That was my intent, and only my intent. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Counselor Cox?
So, in the, in past councils, we've always had it at the end of the meetings, but I've never seen, it's spur-of-the-moment stuff that comes up, maybe like the day of or something. It's never been huge requests to the mayor, or, you know, anything, any heavy lifting, because in the past, we would directly email that to Dana, and she would put it through the proper process. I don't think that having it at the beginning or the end is going to make a difference. What I do think, though, and this is just my opinion, that if there's a serious request to the mayor, that it should be emailed to Dana, you have it in writing, you can track it, the language is better, you can have that discussion back and forth with Dana to make sure that you're clear on what your request is, and then it's tracked in the log. I don't see any difference with doing it here, other than it's time-consuming, and it could become convoluted, and it's harder for Dana to process. I don't think requests to the mayor should be processed through a City Council meeting at all.
Thank you, Counselor Cox. Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, I didn't support this at committee. Couple reasons why is, you know, so we sit up here for an hour, two or three sometimes. We have public hearings, we listen to the people speak at public hearings, and we're able to process that and make requests. Also, I don't think this is the stage where you want the council and the administration, which we are blessed to have here at every single council meeting, because the last administration, and I'm not trying to beat them up or anything, but they were never here. Our CAO was here barely, if he just needed something to make sure something went through, but we're blessed to have this administration here to listen to us. So I didn't support it. Counselor Lombard didn't support it. We didn't think that it would make a difference moving forward or backward. Actually, it's a better place at the back end of this, so that way we can get it out at the end of the meeting, after listening to everybody for the entire time.
Thank you. Anybody else? So I didn't support it either. I was sitting on the committee that night, because I, echoing Counselor Cox, I think the request for the mayor primarily should be in writing, and when we make the request for the mayor, they have to have time to respond, and if we just give it to them verbally here and ask them to, there's no way they can respond. So I was not in favor of changing it. I think our system works pretty good. We have a very robust tracking method that Dana keeps up, and if any counselor feels that the request for the mayor is going on deaf ears, there are plenty of ways for us to raise that with the mayor personally and as a collective body, so I'm going to vote against this tonight. Anybody else? So, is this a, oh, Jen, sorry.
Just to add to what's been said, I, we've got people in the audience here waiting to speak for a public hearing, and I don't want to make them wait any longer than they would have to, and if we submit a request to the mayor, that's what would happen, so thank you.
Okay, do we have to roll call? Simple majority. All those in favor, remember, this is in favor of the change proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. The nays have it. Madam Clerk, next order of business. Oh, do you have anything more, Counselor LeBlanc, from order? Okay. Next, order of business?
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of November fourteen.
Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. I have three conservation restrictions. Before I read them, one of the three is in reference to Hutchins Court, so I would just like to declare under MGL Chapter two sixty-eight A that I am an abutter to Hutchins Court, but I have no financial interest in the matter and may discuss and vote on it. Having said that, the first motion is not on Hutchins Court. On a motion by Counsel Lombard, seconded by me, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve a conservation restriction from Samuel S. in Elizabeth Holdsworth of H.C. sixty-eight, Box seventy-four, one oh two, East Fork Road, Silver City, N.M. Where's that at? Thank you, Counselor. N.M., New Mexico, in perpetuity for the properties known as two-two-five R., two-eight-seven, two-eight-seven R., two-eighty-nine R., two-ninety-one R. and two-ninety-three Concord Street Assessor's Map, two-forty-nine Lot seven, twelve, eleven, nine, ten, and eight, Essex County Registry of Deeds Book five-eight-three-two, page three-fourteen, to the Essex County Green Belt Association, Inc., for the purpose of the preservation of a natural resource of the city of Gloucester and being in the public interest pursuant to MGL Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one slash or dash thirty-three. And I so move.
Moving seconded. Do you want to just explain quickly for everybody what we're doing here, because these were, and why we're doing it in this way? I mean, because it's we, go ahead.
This particular motion was as a request to the owners. The other two was just kind of a, something that we needed to do. So where we had the special meeting, we thought we would do all three at the same time. So the discussion on this particular matter is that these privately owned parcels for restriction at Concord Street, number two-ninety-three, are owned by Sam and Betsy Holdsworth. There is an existing home and barn on the frontage at two-ninety-three Concord Street, and that consists of twenty-eight acres north of Concord Street, immediately behind their home, upland, open fields and woods adjacent to Salt Marsh. The Holdsworths are in the process of selling their property, but prior to the sale, they want to put a restriction on it to restrict it to its current residential uses on the frontage and permanently protecting the remaining property. The property for restriction was conveyed to the Essex County Green Belt a year ago in the land they own across the road, about at the corner of Concord Street and Old Thompson, and will completely protect all of their land. This is effectively a building envelope so that the homeowners can continue to maintain, replace, and rebuild the existing structures that are on the frontage.
Thank you. So this is a, any council questions? Okay, this is just a simple majority. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next one?
Thank you. This is Hutchins Court. On a motion by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Lombard, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve a conservation restriction in perpetuity from the grantor, the Essex County Green Belt Association, for the properties known as seven A., seven B. and seventeen Hutchins Court, Assessor's Map one-twenty-five, Lot ninety-nine, and Assessor's Map one-fifteen, Lot thirty, Essex County Registry of Deeds Document Number five-six-one-six-two-seven, to the city of Gloucester for the purpose of the preservation of a natural resource of the city of Gloucester and being in the public interest pursuant to MGL Chapter one eighty-four, Section thirty-one hyphen thirty-three. And I so move.
Moving seconded.
So the discussion on this is that Hutchins Court properties were acquired by the Essex County Green Belt with the help of the city in two thousand fifteen through two CPA fund grants and substantial private fundraising. It was always contemplated that the Essex County Green Belt would convey a restriction to the city as another level of protection on the land and consistent with the CPA grants. The ECGA representative told the Planning and Development Committee that there is an expectation of building a trail system on the property with the end of Hutchins Court graded and finished prior to welcoming the public. In other words, there's lots of construction going back there right now, and it wouldn't be in our best interest to start the trails until such time that all that work is done. The Essex County Green Belt Association would be the landowner responsible of all the management and the maintenance of the land, and the city through Concom will have an enforcement right over the ECGA to ensure that they are protecting the conservation values of the property appropriately.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And next one.
My third and final is one that is near and dear to all of us, because we all remember Save the Shores and how important that was. On a motion by Counsel Lombard, seconded by me, the Planning and Development Committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve a conservation restriction in perpetuity from the grantor, the Essex County Green Belt Association, for the properties known as one-sixty-six Atlantic Road, Map seventy-three, Lot thirty-two, and one-seventy, comma, one-seventy-two, comma, one-seventy-eight Atlantic Road, Assessor's Map seventy-six, Lots three, four, and five, Essex County Southern District Land Court Document five-eight-eight-three-one-eight, Certificate Number nine-one-zero-five-four, to the city of Gloucester for the purpose of the preservation of a natural resource of the city of Gloucester and being in the public interest pursuant to MGL Chapter one eighty-four, Sections thirty-one through thirty-three. And I so move.
Good movement, seconded. So this is the one on the back shore?
Exactly. These Atlantic Road parcels were under discussion several years ago when there was a potential that one of the parcels would be developed. This started Save Our Shores, a group that raised funds and created the opportunity to purchase the parcels for permanent conservation. SOS worked with the group that created an entity to temporarily hold the parcels, the Land Conservation Advocacy Trust. At the time of SOS's fundraising efforts, they were awarded a CPA fund grant. That award came with the obligation that the landowner conveys a restriction to the city in exchange for the grant. SOS and the Land Conservation Advocacy Trust asked the Essex County Green Belt Association to be the long-term owners of the parcel. ECGA's assessment was that the other groups had raised sufficient private funding for the project, so that the city's CPA fund grant was not needed, and informed the city in the summer of two thousand and seventeen via a letter to the city's Community Preservation Committee saying that the CPA fund grant monies weren't required.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, same deal. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. And do we have to do some signing on this tonight, Madam Clerk? Okay, so make sure everyone signs the documents before you leave tonight. Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is Public Hearing two thousand eighteen, zero-six-zero, adoption of a resolution to renew the state-authorized Harbor Town (downtown) Cultural District for at least five years.
Thank you very much, and I will open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishing to speak in favor, approach. Jill, welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, councilors. Jill Cahill, Community Development Director. Thank you for considering this tonight, and thank you, PND, for moving this through. Most of you know our, we have two cultural districts in our city, which is very unique and something to be very proud of. We re-designated Rocky Neck, and you guys helped with that last year, and this year, we're up for re-designation in front of the Mass. Cultural Council for the downtown cultural district. It's for five years. We just finished five years, and the important part of this is it's a partnership between the Arts and Culture Community, the business community, and the municipality, so it's really an important partnership to bring. I guess the best way to say this is that the way, and the mission statement for this cultural district is they consider residents, visitors, employees, everyone who comes to this town, we're trying to make the experience for everyone who lives here and visits, so they consider everybody visitors, and our goals and strategies. So I submitted the annual report, so everybody saw that. We outlined eleven short-term goals and four long-term goals, just some of the highlights. One of the goals is to preserve integrity of downtown and enhance arts, culture, and innovation, and you all know that with our Gloucester Fresh program, we've done a lot to bring some attention to the local restaurants and local fishermen, and we're thrilled that GMGI has opened in this cultural district, so those are big accomplishments. Provide access to arts and culture is another goal, and we believe that we've done a lot around that as well. The Harbor Voices exhibit that was here, Stephanie Bennetson's exhibit, Jason Groves' Veterans exhibit, Kate Anne Reed's, the mayor's Halloween party, so just getting people downtown and offering them things to do and to see. And another one of our goals is to increase walking traffic downtown, and I wish Mike was still here, because we need to thank DPW and the City Council and the administration for helping us with that, improving sidewalks and accessibility throughout the city, but in particular downtown Maplewood Ave., City Hall, we just did Duncan Street. So those are just a few of them, and one of the things that we like to brag about a little bit is that we do have a very high occupancy rate downtown. We're at ninety-two percent that last time we looked, so we're proud of that, and we'd like to keep it going, going up, and so we're just asking for this resolution so that we can move forward for the next five years. And a couple of things we're looking forward to are, we just applied for and expect to receive a five-thousand-dollar grant from the Mass. Cultural Council. We're going to use it to co-brand the Harbor Walk with the Harbor, with the downtown cultural district. We need to do some more work in the marketing of that, especially the Harbor Walk. It's a living and breathing thing, so we need to bring some attention to it, and since it really goes through the entire cultural district, we think that's kind of the perfect marriage to bring those together. And we also spoke a lot about it in our application to the SEC for the Harbor Master improvements, because of a lot of what they look for is economic impact, and we're hopeful that bringing locals and visitors in through the Harbor Mass., through the harbor and through the Harbor Masters building will connect them straight up across Rogers Street into Main Street through the cultural district. So lots of exciting things coming up, and we hope that everyone will support this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. One quick question, just for, it's a technical question, but there's a slight change in the name of the cultural district in terms of this application, but it's the same cultural district, right?
Correct. What, when it was approved, when you passed the resolution five years ago, you, the city passed it as the downtown cultural district. The Mass. Cultural Council encouraged, encouraged us, them at the time, us, to change it to Harbor Town, and that's just not something that people downtown have really recognized, really identify with. It's not something that we've, Gloucester has called itself before, and so we're looking to go back to downtown.
Thank you. Counselor Heck?
Thank you, thank you. What, does this cost us anything as a city annually, or is it a net gain for us?
It does not, no.
Okay.
We, the funding that we receive has changed over the years, depending on the state funding to the Cultural Council. Like I said, this year, we're lucky, each of us, well, whoever applied is getting, we're getting both Rocky Neck and downtown will each receive the five-thousand-dollar grants. We'll be before you to accept them.
Thank you. Counselor Cox?
Who's on the committee now?
So the partners, the partners, I think there's something like fifty-some partners. Right now, to get through the process, it's been primarily myself and Catherine Ryan, because we have to get the, and KPM Museum was the founding partner, because we had to get an extension. Anyway, to get through the paperwork process, we've been kind of muscling it along to then, once we know that it's re-designated, because many of the partners are hoping primarily for the name change. So, but all the partners are still on board that are listed in the twenty-seven team report.
But there was actual committee at one point in time?
Yeah.
There was about six of us?
Yes.
Is that no longer necessary now that we?
No, it will be with the re-designation, yes. So we will, if you were on it, we'll be reaching out to you soon.
Sorry I asked.
Okay, anybody else for Jill? Okay, thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
If you have any questions later, we'll ask you. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to is speaking in opposition? Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are none.
Thank you. Any other council questions? I'll close the public hearing and ask for the committee report. Counselor Gilman?
Thank you, Counselor. On Planning and Development Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution by the city of Gloucester, Massachusetts, to renew a state-authorized cultural district as shown in the map presented and incorporated by reference for at least five years to be named downtown Gloucester Cultural District, whereas the city wishes to pursue a state-authorized cultural district through the enabling legislation, Mass. General Law's Chapter ten, Section fifty-eight A, whereas the city has a mixed-use geographical area that has a concentration of cultural facilities and assets. Whereas, the city has held a public hearing and adopted a resolution proclaiming its interest in re-establishing a state-designated cultural district. Whereas, the city has created a broad and diverse partnership of stakeholders committed to cultural community and economic development to provide oversight of the district. Whereas, the Massachusetts Cultural Council would be petitioned in accordance with its guidelines and criteria to designate said cultural district. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Gloucester that the City of Gloucester, Article One, endorses the submission of this application and agrees to foster the development of a cultural district. Article Two, endorses a state-sponsored cultural district goals, attracting artists and cultural enterprises, encouraging business and job development, establishing tourist destinations, preserving and reusing historic buildings, enhancing property values, and fostering local cultural development. Article Three, will appoint a city official to represent the city within the district partnership of said cultural district. Article Four, encourages all who own property or businesses within said cultural district to involve themselves and participate in the full development of the cultural district. And Article Five directs city agencies to identify programs and services that could support and enhance the development of the cultural district and ensure that those programs and services are accessible to the cultural district. And I so move. I think the most important thing in my discussion that I wanted to bring out is what Council President Lundberg already talked about, and that was the importance of changing the name for better identification, for branding to the public, and making it as plain as possible to its location. And I just wanted to shout out to Catherine Ryan, who was a major catalyst to moving this forward. And she attended the meeting, the PND meeting, along with Jill Cahill. And so shout out to Catherine for good work and good volunteerism. So I hope you join me in supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from councilors? It's a good thing this is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. So the next item is a public hearing about the amendment of our hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors, and special events, most of which is really technical stuff. Is there anyone here for that public hearing? Because what I plan to do is hold that till the end, and we'll take the other public hearings so we don't have all of you sitting around while we go through the minutia of nine motions to amend the vendors ordinance. Anybody here for the vendors ordinance? Good. So we will --
Are you saying that my order is not riveting?
So we will take out of order, we will go to the next public hearing, oh sixty-two?
Oh sixty-two and oh sixty-three together.
Okay, we'll take oh sixty-two and oh sixty-three together. Okay, so we will go to public hearing 2018-oh sixty-two and 2018-oh sixty-three, which is to amend GCO Chapter Twenty-two Traffic and Motor Vehicles, fifteen minutes parking by deleting Western Ave., northern side of Centennial to Perkins Road. And oh sixty-three, fifteen-minute parking by adding Western Ave., northerly side from its intersection of Centennial for a distance of thirty feet. And I'll open the public hearing and ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There are none.
Thank you. Any counsel questions? There are none. I'll close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Counselor LeBlanc?
There are two motions for this this evening. And just to clarify, I'll clarify it after. Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Sections Twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by deleting Western Avenue, northerly side from Centennial Avenue to Perkins Road. An I so move.
Seconded. Moving seconded. Any commentary?
Yes. A couple of months ago, we voted to add fifteen-minute parking in front of Poseidon's Restaurant. We voted to make the entire frontage of Poseidon's, and there's another business before you get to the cutbridge, the entirety, for fifteen-minute parking, not just one space like we normally do. So the other tenants that moved in, Susan Kelly has her business there on the corner of Perkins Road in the Boulevard, and she asked that we amend this so she has parking in front of her business rather than fifteen minutes because her business won't allow people to come in for fifteen minutes at a time. It's more of a process, sitting down and going through, rather than fifteen minutes, which makes sense for us. So this is where this is coming from.
Right, so normally, when we do a fifteen-minute parking in front of a business, it's one space, and that's what we're trying to do here, is just correct what we did before so that it's just the one space. Okay. So was the first move seconded? All those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. And the second motion?
Second motion is to add the parking again. So Ordinance Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Sections Twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by adding Western Avenue, northerly side from its intersection with Centennial Avenue in a westerly direction for a distance of thirty feet. An I so move.
Seconded. Good, moving seconded. Any other comments? If all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item of business.
Next item is this is Public Hearing 2018-64 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-two Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section Twenty-two, two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by adding Rogers Street, northerly side, one parking space located at meter one ninety in front of the electric pole, number two sixty-six.
Excellent. I will open the public hearing, another fifteen-minute parking space, and ask if anyone wishing to speak in favor. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Yes. I've been here this all the time, I really appreciate it.
So we all know who you are, but if you just --
I've never been to one of these before.
If you just identify yourself for the record, Hallie, please.
Okay, is that better? All right. So I am the owner of Turtle Alley.
Just your name and address.
Oh, sorry. Hallie Baker, Nine Wanson Street. So it's obvious why I would want a fifteen-minute spot in front of our store. It might not be obvious to a lot of folks that the spots in front of the store are actually ten hours, not two hours or eight hours, but ten. Across the street is a huge lot that is also kiosk for ten hours or however many hours. And then the lot next in between the building center and the Gloucester House, I can never remember what that lot is called, but that's also metered parking now. The business we're in is pretty, can be impulsive. If there's not parking in front of the store, people won't stop. There is some parking above us that is also for the pasta shop and things. It's not officially parking for us, and I think it's worth saying that there's probably twenty-five percent or thirty percent of our customers are older, and they're not going to park up there and walk down and then walk back up. I think as we see sort of the face of Rogers Street change, it's becoming more commercial. The ten-hour spots all along up and down Rogers Street just don't seem to make a lot of sense. I did some research. There's six spaces on Main Street. I think there are four spaces on Washington Street that are fifteen minutes, and there's not one fifteen-minute spot on Rogers Street. Also, I think we're the only retail business on Rogers Street that doesn't have its own parking. So the ten hours in front of our store, and there are two spots, one spot to let people sort of swing in and grab chocolates when they're dragging their kids from piano practice to soccer practice or whatever they're doing. To me, it speaks more to keeping the locals in the forefront, and the locals are the ones that support us. I mean, Gloucester is changing, and the summers are really pretty fabulous downtown, but the locals are the ones who built us. And if we have a spot that they can use easily, it's not just for us. It stands to benefit the pasta shop, which there's an elevator up to, and the bank, and whoever's just needing to run up and do something. So I mean, it makes sense to me. I've looked at cars that have been parked for ten hours in front of the store, and there is no question that we suffer on those days. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications?
There is one from Amanda Cabana in support of the fifteen-minute parking.
Great. And we have some people in the audience with a show of hands. Anybody just in favor who came tonight, just raise your hand. Oh, wow, that's, Dana will count. Then we multiply that times a hundred, and that goes in the record. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming. We appreciate that. Any counsel questions on the technicalities of this? And I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Ordinance and Administration voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter Twenty-two, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Sections Twenty-two dash two eighty, fifteen-minute parking by adding Rogers Street, northerly side, one space located at meter number one ninety in front of electrical pole, number two sixty-six. An I so move.
Seconded. Moving seconded. Any other comments from councilors? Counselor Cox?
So I've recently come into some free time, and I would like to propose a, not a parking study because that has been done several times in the last four or five years, but a complete and absolute overhaul of the metered parking areas. I have talked with the administration. I will lead this. You really messed up my example earlier with the fixed vendors going after, but I will do this like I did with the fixed vendors and go in and overhaul and do the research and do the layout. What I'm asking is that we pause on this fifteen-minute spot in order to do the overhaul. I could probably have it back to council within a couple of weeks, and then it takes anywhere from thirty to sixty days to go through the process again for being referred out, going to O&amp;A, possibly going to Traffic, and then being advertised for a public hearing. But I think what we're doing and what we've been doing over the last couple of years is adding spots here and there and not looking at the overall larger picture. So I guess I'm asking for a pause on any future changes to the parking area that has to do with the parking meters, and let's overhaul this systematically and not piece by piece.
So Counselor Holmgren?
I would, I need to say I do agree with you, but this ordinance would benefit a local business owner who's invested a lot in this community. I don't exactly know what an overhaul would consist of, but Hallie and her family and friends have worked very hard to bring this to us tonight with Counselor Hecht. I see it as benefiting the community in the long term, and perhaps we could do an overhaul after we vote on this tonight.
So this doesn't change the fact that there could be a fifteen-minute spot in this location. We'll work backwards from that and try to make sure that there are fifteen-minute spots, metered spots, throughout the downtown area. So it's not necessarily eliminating this. It very well could be there. But it also could be a spot up or something because we want to be systematic about where we locate these and to make sure that they're spread out throughout the downtown area.
So I'm going to just step in here. So we've got a motion on the table to approve this parking spot, which we can vote on. I think the idea of a study is a great idea. I'm not in favor of pausing this. If you want to make an amendment to the motion, you can do that, and we'll vote on the amendment and then move forward on that. Or if you just want to say that with good faith that we'll do the study, but we want to go ahead with this motion, so.
It's not a study. It would be an overhaul of the system to make sure that --
Whatever, yes, but I don't think we ought to hold this one hostage.
That's fine. I just thought we should do it as a group.
Okay, got it, got it. Anybody else want to speak on this particular, on the motion, which is for this one space? Yes, Counselor Gilman, and then Counselor Hecht.
So I wish I, this was not the case, but I am a frequent customer of this particular chocolate place. I love the smell in there. I often get house gifts for people, and I was just in there as recently as about five days ago. But here's the deal. Hallie is absolutely correct because a lot of people on a rainy day will buzz by there, and if there's no parking, it's just a crazy place. It's one of those places where you just want to run in, grab something, and kind of grab and go. So I have great empathy for how she feels, how that business feels. And I also respected the fact that she was also speaking for the pasta place and the other place, so she realizes that it's not a private spot for her. So in the spirit of being a good neighbor to all the other businesses, she definitely understands that. So I will be supporting this motion. I also look forward to hearing Counselor Cox's recommendations for other places going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Hecht?
Counselor Cox, I think you're right on. And you asked me at the O&amp;A meeting how many ten-hour meters there were, and I didn't know the answer. So John scrambled today and found that out for me. So there's four hundred and forty ten-hour meters in the downtown area. In the lots, there's three hundred, and on the street, there's one forty. So I agree a hundred percent with the planning. I think that the, this is, you know, one quarter of one percent of the total ten-hour parking spots. And I think Melissa, I mean, excuse me, Hallie was not bragging enough. You've been on, what, people coming over the bridge, Phantom Gornay May, nine times? She's built this up not only as a local company, but as really bringing people to Gloucester as a destination. So I'm pretty excited about this. At first, she really had to kind of talk me into it, to tell you the truth. And at Traffic, they thought it was such a good idea that they recommended both spots in front of the store be fifteen minutes, but we compromised on one spot being fifteen minutes. So I'm going to support this, and I'm very excited about it. We've got a lot of people here excited about it, and Melissa, I'd be happy to help you as well with the program that you're talking about.
Thank you, Counselor Hecht. Counselor O'Hara?
Yes, I want to thank Counselor Cox for bringing that up because I'm in agreement with the numbers just, I mean, we're downtown. We're not, at least I wouldn't think, you don't want cars coming in and dropping anchor for ten hours. I mean, you want cars to move in and out so that the vendors, the owners of the stores can see people. We certainly have plenty of parking in the I-4C, too, that they can go there and drop their anchor for ten hours and walk wherever they're going and have movement of cars in the downtown district, Main Street and the surrounding streets. To Hallie's point and Counselor Gilman's, I'm very much supportive of cars being able to drop in and make their purchase and leave. So I will be supporting this. And Counselor Cox, I'll be more than happy to work with you on the overhaul of the parking spaces throughout the city. Thank you.
Counselor Holmgren, you want to speak again? So anybody else before we go round two here? Okay, Counselor Holmgren.
I would like to offer an amendment to make two fifteen-minute parking spaces available. I know that that's a bit of a reach, but the Traffic Commission did recommend that.
that, and, uh, I, I will add that I, I agree with councillor Cox. There should be a cohesive plan, but we, we do need to vote on this tonight, I think. Thank you.
Well, before we get to that, I mean, the, and, uh, an amendment to add another one, I mean, these, this is very specific. This is, you know, has been vetted in terms of exactly where this space is, so just, uh, another space, I, I don't think we can entertain, we can't just vote on that, because there has to be a specific place for it, or we don't have that. So we're certainly willing to consider that at some point, and certainly part of the study would be, do we need to? But that's a good point. Okay. Anybody else want to speak? So, uh, this is a simple voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, great. Congratulations, Hallie. Thank you very much. I think everyone recognizes the importance of this as part of the way we can help the small businesses, and I think councillor Cox should be commended on this, because we ought to be a little more strategic about these 15-minute spaces. There's a lot of things we could do to make things better downtown, so great, and we will do that. Yes, councillor Hecht?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. Really, great showing, and this is the way it's supposed to happen. You went through a process, you did a great job in the process, you brought people, and uh, you did a great job. Thank you.
Okay, madam clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is public hearing, um, 2018-065.
Wait, wait, before we go to that, maybe we ought to go back to the hawkers and vendors now. Okay, all right, let's keep going.
Okay. Public hearing, 2018-065 to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-269, Stop Intersections by Adding Northbound Traffic on Church Street at the intersection with Prospect Street.
So I will, uh, open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Nope. Anyone wishes to speak in opposition? Nope. Any communications?
There are none.
No communications, any councillor questions? No councillor questions. Close the public hearing, ask for committee report.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code, or, hold on, where are we? Yeah. By adding, um, a, Stop Intersections by Adding Northbound Traffic on Church Street to its intersection with Prospect Street, an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to have an explanation?
That's it.
Self, self-explanatory? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. Now we'll go back to the hawkers.
Okay. Public hearing, 2018-061, amendments to Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 5 dash, 11 dash 5, fixed vending site-specific locations parentheses six. Section 11 dash six, conduct of business. Section 11 dash seven, business prohibited by, between certain hours. Section 11 dash eight, vendors prohibited upon certain street areas.
I'll open the public hearing, ask if anybody wishing to speak in favor? Nope. Uh, wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications, madam clerk?
There are none.
No, okay, any councillor questions on the technicalities? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll ask for the committee report. There are nine. Do you want to just give an overview, so we'll just run through these things?
Yeah, they're not too, they're not that bad.
Okay.
They're, they're pretty, pretty quick. Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council, um, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending and site-specific locations, six of them, by amending subsection three as follows, delete the word "to" and delete the word "sites" and add the word "site," an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment?
Pretty basic.
Okay. We're just cleaning up this ordinance, and this is just a, really a lot of kind of editing and technical stuff. So all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you, next.
Ordinance, ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending, site-specific locations six, by deleting subsection four in its entirety. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending, site-specific locations, number six, subsection five, by deleting subsection five in its entirety and adding a new subsection five as follows, visitor center parking lot, stage four park, an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending, site-specific locations, subsection six, by deleting the fa, the phrase, the former Duck Boat area, and adding the word "in," an iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending, site-specific locations, by adding Roger Street 25 feet from its intersection with Harbor Loop at a southwest corner of the west entrance to Harbor Loop, an iso move.
Second.
Good, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash 5, fixed vending, site-specific locations, by deleting subsection seven and eight in their entirety. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash six, conduct of business, by deleting the phrase "on public or" and adding a new last sentence, quote, "said vendor shall comply with the Gloucester zoning ordinance," end quote. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, next.
Ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash seven, business prohibited between certain hours by deleting 9:00 PM and adding, in its place, 8:00 PM, and adding a new last sentence, quote, "fixed vendors shall be exempt from prohibited hours during special events," end quote. An iso move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and lastly...
Last, uh, ordinance administration voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the city council amend GCO, Chapter 11, hawkers, peddlers, transient vendors and special events, Section 11 dash eight, vendors prohibited upon certain streets, areas by adding after the words, quote, "with Section 11 dash 10," end quote, the following phrase, quote, "by deleting subsection five, Howe Avenue," and renumbering the remaining subsections, end quote, an iso move. Huff, Howe.
Huff. Huff.
Listen, those who live in glass houses shouldn't throw stones, matos.
Okay, matos. Did you move it?
Uh, yes.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, okay. Great. Okay, we are, we, we are not gonna have a test as to what we just did. But we could. Councillor Nolan? Okay.
I, I just want to say one thing, if I could?
Yes.
Since I don't say much. Melissa did an excellent job on this, working with the administration. Um, a lot of stuff that was cleaned up and moved is perfect. I love the fact that they've included the vendors into stationary sites during special events, they can't be bullied around on a spot that they own, and, uh, I, I think this is one of the best things that you've done since I've been around. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. Thank you councillor Cox.
I, I have to give props where props are due. Uh, the administration, Jim Justino, Chip Pace, and Joanne, um, we all sat in a room for many hours. Um, Bill Sanborn, um, Donna Compton on this particular one. It was very much a group effort, so I, it wasn't just me. Everybody that I just listed spent the same amount of hours. I think Chip's probably spent more hours on it than anybody else, but, um...
He gets paid more.
I had to read everything he wrote. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, and, and it's true, we just breezed through the technicalities of approving all this stuff, but the real work was done by many people, and it, and it just makes things better for our city, so thank you for doing all that.
Some of these locations hadn't been bid on in, um, 10 years, so it was definitely time to relook at what we're doing.
Okay. Madam clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is for council vote, public hearing, 2018-054, to amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22 dash 270.1, resident sticker parking only by adding Babson Street.
Councillor LeBlanc.
So I would like to make a motion to withdraw this order.
Okay. Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, thank you. Madam clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business, the update of the Downtown Development Commission from City Council Representative Council Melissa Cox.
Councillor Cox.
So the DDC has been working diligently to make sure that the downtown is festive with the wreaths and, um, the new, the banners. I would really like everybody to take a look at the banners that we have out. Um, currently, I believe the ones that are up are the man at the wheel, and then the ones that are going to be replaced for the seasonal ones are the red with the white snowflakes. Um, the banners have been, become problematic. Um, weather-wise, they get beat up a lot. The brackets break. It takes, um, a DPW anywhere from three to four days to get all the banners up, um, and, because they're not just downtown, but Railroad Avenue and stuff. So, um, we're trying to think of a better system, um, maybe moving away from banners. So as you guys are doing some traveling, uh, keep an eye out what other cities and towns are doing, and let me know if you have any opinion, um, banners, yes or no. It, it's not very cost-effective for us to keep switching out the banners. Um, I'm, I'm personally opposed to banners having specific dates and stuff like that, because we all know our events change, um, and they cycle through. So, um, having a standard banner program, winter, um, fall, and then spring and summer, so we can try to minimize the, um, the use of DPW. But, uh, you should see the wreaths, um, they should be out on the lights within the next week or so, and, um, trying to think of what else. DDC, um, are they out already? Okay. I was out of town. Um, I was told that they would be in after Thanksgiving, so I haven't been downtown yet. That's about it, the seasonal, so we're a little slow right now.
Thank you very much. Madam clerk, last order of business?
Is the council's request to the mayor.
So we'll start with councillor Holmgren.
There is a lot coming up in the next couple of weeks. I won't mention everything, because I'm sure that a lot of you are going to mention a lot of stuff, but first and foremost, I want to congratulate Rosalina Castro on her retirement from the Health Department. Uh, thank you for your service as 18, with 18 years as our, uh, food inspector, and, uh, wishing you luck, uh, in the next, uh, phase of your life. Um, I want to mention November 30th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, the West Parish Christmas Fair is happening. Uh, it's to benefit the West Parish PTO. There'll be local vendors, gifts for kids to buy for families, uh, crafting for little ones while parents shop. wreaths and kissing balls will be available. On December 1st, there is a holiday fair at St. Paul Lutheran Church from 9:00 to 1:00 PM, and then on the same day, uh, from 2:00 to 5:00, uh, the Beeman School PTO is holding a penny sale, raffle, and, uh, family activities. Uh, and, uh, finally, there is a character breakfast, um, a Disney character and Santa Claus breakfast to benefit the Horribles Parade, uh, at the Legion Hall on, uh, December 9th. Uh, and, uh, there are two seedings, one at 8:30 AM, one at 10 o'clock AM. For tickets, please call Roseanne Cody at 978-335-0755, or you can get in touch with me. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Memhard.
Rather than looking forward, I'm gonna look back briefly just to thank former councillor president Joe Schellino and the merchants downtown, and First R's grand marshal, Pat Earl, for a wonderful Santa Claus parade, which was enjoyed by many, many family and children here in Gloucester on Sunday evening, Sunday afternoon. So congratulations and thank you to all.
Thank you. Councillor Nolan? Councillor Cox?
So Jen took Beeman and West Parish. Um, I will take, December 7th, the Magnolia Sip and Shop. Um, it's also in conjunction with Amy Kerr's, um, artwork, which was on display here for a while, so that is Friday, December 7th, at the Magnolia Library. Saturday, December 8th, is the Middle Street Walk. Um, so there's lots of entertainment up here and some also, and some nonprofits. Um, this is also one of the only times of the year where they have the clock tower open. So they do take people up, uh, where they're permitting. Uh, I highly encourage you to go up there, just not on, and, like at 8:00 PM or something, because the ringing just is deadly. Um, and remember that it chimes at the half an hour mark as well.